Good evening. On our call, the City of Cannon Falls City Council meeting for Thursday, March, or Tuesday, March the 19th to order. Roll call.
Uh, Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Holst.
Here.
Johnson.
Uh, Mattson.
Yep.
McCusker.
Yes.
Shubloom.
Here.
And Mayor Robinson.
Yep. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening on what's supposed to be the last evening of winter. It's all the chief's fault, he went south. Okay. I don't feel so bad then. Anyway, at this time, Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved. I'll second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carries. Moves us on to item five, public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. See, there's no one wishing to address. The council under public input will move on to the public hearing, which is item six A. This is the introduction and first reading of ordinance three twenty-six annexing land located in the town of Cannon Falls, Goodhue County, Minnesota, pursuant to Minnesota statute section four-one-four-zero-three-three subsection two-three permitting annexation by ordinance.
I'll take for Dave on this one since he's on vacation in a much warmer place, too. Um, I think his memo basically kind of lays it out as far as the land itself that's being annexed in. The township was, uh, uh, they've been, they've been part of this process for the whole time. They know it's annexing. They, they got notice of all this. They've, they've pre-approved it before it happened with Mayo and then, um, uh, we did send them notice about this hearing. They asked if they need to be here for any reason. We said, no, you guys already said it's okay. So, um, everything is, you know, okay with the township. They, they understand what's happening. Basically, this is annexes in the last parcels of land for the hospital project. Will complete their parcel. Um, well, um, they'll be ready to start construction soon, uh, which is, uh, um, like I said, hopefully will be, will be happening in a short period of time here. So, I mean, really, basically, there's no, um, no objections from the township. Obviously, the property owner wants it to be annexed in, so it's just merely for the council to, uh, go ahead and get the process going.
Is there any discussion from the council? If not, uh, the, we will open the public hearing for comments from the public. Seeing as there are no, uh, one, or there is no one here from the public that wishes to comment, at this time, we'll close the public hearing and we will be voting on the annexation, our introduction and first reading of ordinance three twenty-six, the annexation of the land, uh, for Mayo Health Systems to proceed with plans to construct a new medical center in Cannon Falls. The Chair will take a motion unless there's any other discussion.
I'll, I'll move, uh, to move forward with the annexation by ordinance.
I'll second it.
A motion by Bill. Second by Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And that moves us on to item seven, the consent agenda. Items on this area, the agenda may be adopted or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those folks at home, I will read the just and correct claims. Item A is the just and, uh, the, well, we'll read the consent agenda, I should say. Item A is the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending March the fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. Item B is the meeting minutes for March fifth, two thousand thirteen city council meeting. Item C is the meeting minutes for the March fifth, two thousand thirteen city council work session. Item D is statutory tort limits. Item E is the application for payment number eight for the library construction project. Item F is resolution two thousand six approving a conditional use permit and preliminary plat for Mayo Health Clinic Systems. Item G is introduction and first reading of ordinance three twenty-eight amending chapter one fifty-two of the Cannon Falls City Code by rezoning certain property from an UR district to a southeast campus plan unit development district. Item H, introduction and first reading of ordinance three twenty-seven amending chapter one fifty-two of the Cannon Falls City Code by rezoning certain property from an R-three medium density residential district to a UR district. Item I, resolution two thousand seven relating to the local trail connections program. Item J, iPads purchase. Item K, library project change order. And item L, resolution twenty-ten authorizing acceptance of a monetary donation for the fire department. Are there any items anybody is wishing to bring down this evening?
I got H, I, and J. And I promise, J, I won't bring it up again after tonight.
H, I, and J. Item H will become item eight B. Item I will become item eight C. And item K, or J, will become, uh, item eight D. With the exceptions of item H, I, and J, are there any other areas anybody wishes to bring down? Now, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus H, I, and J.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bill. Second by Morris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carries. That brings us on to the council business, which is item A, the Eastside Project.
Okay. Uh, Greg is here. He'll talk about the bid, uh, bids that we received. We also need to talk about, uh, as we've discussed before, we had an alternate in there where we had PVC pipe instead of the, the, the iron ductile pipe for the water. Um, so we'll need to decide on that, approve whichever bid we want to go with. Um, and then after that, um, it's going to be, uh, approving a resolution as far as the cost to be assessed for the project. So, once, uh, well, once we approve the bid, either the plastic or the ductile, um, that'll move the project forward. And then the next one is, um, just a resolution that's going to call for the cost to be assessed. And what's going to happen with that is Greg will prep up a final assessment roll. We'll have that at the next council meeting where we'll call for a public hearing on the assessment, uh, which will probably happen then at the first meeting in May. Uh, we had a open house before the council meeting tonight. Uh, Greg presented the updated assessment numbers. Uh, you know, basically, the assessment numbers dropped by, for the high-end ones, eleven hundred dollars, somewhere in there. Um, others dropped, um, proportionately as well. So, you know, the, we, um, had a number of questions about the project from the residents, things like that, but, so we, we, we did have that before the meeting. That seemed to go very well. Um, so it was good to see, uh, us be able to get those assessment amounts down, uh, for the residents and that, uh, always goes over well. So I guess with that, we'll let Greg kind of run through things and we can have a conversation about the bid.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, got my summary letter in the packets there. We got ten bids. We, uh, I think we benefited from an early bid opening. We got real competitive bids and the low bidder is, uh, SM Henches, who has done the last four major reconstruct projects, so we're quite familiar with them and they've gone fairly well. So we're, we're pretty excited. The prices, as you can see, were quite a bit under the estimate. Not exactly sure. All the reason, the blacktop price was much lower than we anticipated. That's probably the biggest item right there. Um, I had preliminary discussions with them. They're probably looking at a start date in late May, so, um, not first thing in April. Of course, who knows when, when we're going to have spring issue anyways, so. But yeah, we, we updated the residents tonight that it'd probably be close to Memorial Day or maybe shortly after the project would start and by, and more to get wrapped up, excuse me, by Labor Day or into September. The completion date is the end of September, so I think that side project will, well, completed within a timeframe. Um, we'll have a better idea on the schedule when we move forward. We did have two bids. You could see bid one and bid two. Bid schedule one was the PVC pipe for the six-inch water main. Uh, it was the only difference. And bid schedule two was a PVC water main pipe and there's a difference in the low bid of each of forty-seven thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. So as part of your award tonight, you need to award either bid schedule one or bid schedule two. Thankfully, they both came from Henches, so we don't have a, a difference of contractor between the two. Um, you could see that's generally consistent, anywhere from thirty to fifty grand, the pipe material savings between the ductile and the PVC. Um, that's really mostly in the material costs. There is a little more labor involved with the plastic water main, with the fittings. You gotta, they, there's, the fittings are a little more involved and also all the service connections need to saddle on the PVC versus the ductile, they can just drill right into the pipe and tie, and then screw it right into the, the shut-off right into there. So any future connections, they'd have to be wary if, when ahead with PVC, have to be wary that they would need a saddle when they did any new connections. The other thing with PVC, we got to string a tracer wire on there. Right now, the water, Public Works goes out, they can find that metal pipe with their locator underground. The city has, is responsible to locate all their utilities within the right of way, water, sewer, and storm sewer. So they put a plastic pipe in there, we can't find it, so we gotta put a tracer wire in there with the test stations where the wires come up to the surface at about every hydrant. And that's how we locate it. Um, there again, you know, the water, the, the wire gets snapped or someone hits it in future connections, you know, we, we lose some ability to locate the pipe at that point. The service line still would be copper from the main back to the shut-off just because it's easier to locate it and we, you know, it'd been even more. This was a fairly simple way to get two different prices for the PVC pipe and see what the difference in price was.
So bid one, bid one is the ductile, right?
Ductile, bid one is the ductile iron pipe, which is what the city's been using and is used in most cases. There are several cities that use plastic water main, too. Um, both of them are ra, rated for pressure pipe. Both of them are approved to be used for water and the PVC's been used for twenty, thirty years for water pipe, too. It's, comes down a lot to preference. You know, the Public Works guys and the engineers, you know, are usually conservative bunch and like to keep doing what's been working and what does. We typically don't have issues with ductile freezing. Plastic, you can have them crack longitudinally if they do break. Um, they do sometimes, but I, you know, not like cast does. So that's another, another thought there. I know Public Works, their, their leaning would be to keep duct, keep with ductile because we've had good luck with it and what we've been using, and that's what we've been using in the past.
Would, would it be, if something does go wrong, is it more expensive to get at the, to replace PVC versus just fixing, uh, the ductile?
It depends on the break. If it was a longer break, you might have a bigger hole. They use the same fittings, so there really isn't a difference as far as cutting off, you know, where the good pipe is. Let's say we had to replace a, a section of bad pipe. You'd cut them off in the same place, you'd use the same sleeves to put them back on. The, the retainer, the restrainer glands, or megalux, they call them, are different. There's more teeth on the plastic ones because you have to distribute the load on that plastic pipe a little more than you do on the ductile because of the, you know, you want it to egg shape on you. So there's a little bit more labor involved, but a repair would generally be about the same.
Okay. What, um, what generally lasts longer? I mean, you mentioned the possibility of a, a freeze, uh, the ductile iron wouldn't necessarily crack because of a freezing, but PVC might?
It's, it's going to be better than cast, the PVC would be. I know it, it, it depends on if, if it just freezes and there's nothing, no rocks or anything against the pipe, it's probably not going to break unless it's a long piece or for, or some other conditions of the ground. You know, plastic, who knows how long that stuff lasts, but ductile, I mean, they've put ductile pipe in the ground for, for forty years, too, so. And, you know, once the water's in there, it, it kind of creates a little, its own thing on the inside of the pipe, no matter what the material is. So from a longevity standpoint, I don't know. I think you would have problems with the fittings before you're going to have problems with either pipe, just because that seems to be where a lot of times we have an issue, whether it's a bolt that didn't get completely tightened or, or the bolts themselves might start to corrode. The plastic pipe really started getting used where people have hot or acidic soils that eat metal. Like in Otana, for example, they use it exclusively and then all the fittings, the tees to the hydrants and the valves, all are encased in, in plastic and wrapped up, so the dirt can't get to them. And that's really where the plastic started in, you know, being used in municipal applications was where you've got hot soils that attack the metal and eat, right, eat holes right through it. And we don't have that here.
Any other discussion? Leroy?
Well, I gotta weigh in on this because I work with this stuff. It, uh, um, I'm outdated with my computers, but, uh, uh, I'm not outdated with this stuff. I, I truly believe if we don't go with PVC, we're just going with the same old thing. Your, your problem, you had up the school up here, probably wouldn't have happened if you'd have had PVC in there. Neither pipe should freeze. Um, I understand that, but it, uh, from my experience, the repairs are definitely cheaper on PVC. The other thing that I have a big concern about is, you guys, we have all fluctuating soils up here. We go from rock, we go to gravel, we go to dirt. And anytime you have these soil changes, that's where your ductile iron gives you problems. The other thing with ductile iron is ninety-nine percent of the time, ductile iron does not leak, it shears off. So when you have a repair, you, and a leak, you have a major leak. Very seldom does PVC ever shear off. You can have a leak, you can have a pipe crack, like Greg says, you can have a saddle that doesn't work right. But you have all these fittings of ductile iron or PVC, you have to put in the same amount of fittings. Um, I just think that, uh, if we don't go with the PVC, uh, it's time to change because the ductile iron, when I started out in nineteen sixty-eight, we were told that all our cast iron would last a hundred years. It hasn't lasted like that. The other problem we have with, with ductile iron, if you want to truly do a good job, you should have, uh, can't think of the right word, thercotic tests on this stuff for millivolts and stuff. Greg talked about soil eat, uh, cast iron up, but also we can get millivolt systems in the pipe that eats it up, too. The gas company has somebody full-time that just takes care of this stuff. Most cities don't monkey with it, but it can be a problem. The other thing is, gas company twenty years ago went to all plastic pipe and they were, they were one of the last to want to do that. They wanted to stick with their steel, but they found out that the plastic pipe actually gives less problems with frost and stuff as far as shearing off. Uh, so whatever I could do to encourage the city, the staff not to be scared of PVC, um, they can reline these pipes. Some of these cities are going with relining instead of replacing. Uh, they can reline PVC just as well as anything else. So, um, the longevity, as far as I'm concerned, will be there and it's the price, um, and I think we should go with it. Thank you.
Any other discussion on any of the rest of the project? Okay, uh, we got to decide which one we want to go with as far as the ductile or the PVC, so I guess we'll take, uh, a vote on bid schedule one first, which is the ductile, uh, and, uh, the one that comes out with the most will go.
Or you can just make a, make a motion to approve one.
One or the other, yeah.
Yeah, if you want to just pick one and make a motion to approve that one. That works just fine, too.
I'll make a motion to approve number two, the PVC.
Okay, I have a motion, uh, from Leroy.
I'll second.
Second from Rod, uh, to go with bid schedule two, which is the PVC. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Uh, the ayes have it and we'll go with bid number two, which is the PVC.
So on the next item, which is the assessment thing, just understand that I'll adjust the numbers that are in there to reflect the bid price for the bid two, because the ones in there right now are the, the bid one. I went high. If I'm going to do it, I'm going to, you know, aim high on the resolution. So when you, when you look at the, uh, resolution two thousand nine, um, just understand that we'll, we'll adjust that final number down to actually reflect the, the bid two prices. So that'll be a little bit of a difference there.
Okay.
You know, the one thing, Greg, when you're done with this, then we've got these other projects we're talking about later on. I would like, uh, some kind of feedback when the project's all done, what your thoughts are on it, advantage, disadvantage, um, and just get your feedback on that job when you get done.
Sure.
Yeah, we can have staff see how it goes once they're in and maintaining them and, you know, things like that. But it's like Greg said, you know, change is always hard, so.
Yeah.
They'll learn, yeah, they'll learn something.
Which was surprisingly, Leroy, you're the one that's always against any changes.
Well, this is.
Oh, you wanted one.
This is in electronics.
So, so with that, then.
Uh, we need to go to eight-eight, eight-eight-two and take a, I need a motion, uh, to approve resolution number two oh eight.
Yep.
Uh, warning the bid to, uh, SM Henches and Sons of Jordan.
Uh, so moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Bill. Second by Rod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And that one carries. And that brings us on to item eight A three, which is resolution two oh nine, declaring the cost to be assessed and ordered in preparation of proposed assessment.
I will, uh, make a motion to approve resolution two, two oh oh nine.
I will second it.
And have I second by Rod? All right. Any further discussion? And that's with the, uh, bid two pricing in there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carries.
All right. Thank you.
That brings us to item eight B, uh, the ordinance three twenty-seven rezoning the identified area by the accompanying map from R-three medium density to residential district to a UR urban reserve district.
Okay, was that the one, Aaron, on Sandstone Ridge?
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's the Sandstone Ridge.
I guess my question for you, Aaron, and, uh, I just wanted to bring this up tonight. I don't know if you have to give me any feedback on it, but, um, probably a year, over a year ago, when this first came to an issue was, um, we've got all these mains up there to nowhere and, uh, then it became a question if we, we never accepted the project, so did we even own the land and we're hooked up to the mains? So we, um, we, uh, at that time, took a couple of months and they got back to me and said, actually, we don't own the land. Uh, we can't go in there and, actually, if something break, we can't go in and work on it. So, um, at that time, I thought, wow, uh, what a weird situation. So I talked to Tom and, and to Greg and said, you better start looking into a reroute situation where we can run a new main up that hill or something and get that whole thing shut off up there. Uh, then approximately about three months, Aaron got back to me and said, actually, technically, now supposedly we can drive on there and we can get at it. Um, so this thing's been kind of a mixed up situation where we're at. Um, the other thing is, the county offered possibly to sell it to us for a dollar and I assume that all fell through and it isn't going to work. Um, so I keep wondering now, I guess, why we're changing ordinances or we're doing something different when technically it isn't even a part of the city. So, so I guess I'm just wondering why we're not, why we're doing anything at all, why we aren't sitting on this. I also don't know why, um, instead of buying computers, we don't take that money and just try to offer the county something and buy that land and get it into our hands so we can bypass the mains, turn around and sell it when we're done, uh, before somebody else buys this thing and holds us hostage to it. The other thing is up there, too, if you change this ordinance now, there was supposedly seven buildable lots up there. So does this change that? And they're completely out of the picture on the buildable lots? Do they have to come back and we have to redo things again? So I was kind of wondering why we're doing anything at all with this right now.
Okay. Uh, first of all, the county's not going to sell it to us for twelve thousand dollars, so even if we don't buy the iPads, we won't have enough money.
But I was thinking a little more and that, but I thought the iPads would go towards it.
Okay, so the main reason is, is that the county's still going to, unless we can work something out, they're still going to put it up for auction in September, October, somewhere in there. Um, and if we can't work something out with them and it goes up for auction and people buy individual lots for it and it's still zoned, R-three, they can technically come in thinking that, well, it's zoned this, we looked it up, we can build houses. Well, when they come in, we gotta tell them, no, you can't build houses because the infrastructure's not in place, um, you know, the soils won't allow it, you know, whatever. So this is just one of the ways we can help control that so that if we can't work something up to, out with the county and they still go up for auction and somebody takes a look at these lots, they're going to see that they're zoned at least urban reserve, which basically in our zoning just says, you can't do anything with them until you come in and, and work out a new zoning with the city. So it'll hopefully help clear up people that only do their research online and don't actually either go out and look at the lots, contact the county or contact the city. And unfortunately, it happens more often than you think when you have auctions like this because you're talking about, you know, a lot for four thousand dollars. And somebody looks online and says, oh, it's, it's a, you know, residential lot, zoned R-three, I can pick it up for five thousand dollars, that's a great deal, I'm going to do it. They don't bother to call the city, they don't bother to call the county first, they don't know what they're getting into, they buy it, then, then they come in, they find out all the issues. That's what we're trying to avoid. So by this, any sort of research that they'll do, even the most basic due diligence, is to come up with the fact that urban reserve zoning means that they have to come in and work with the city before they can do anything with their land. Um, so that's why we're doing this part. Our hope is still that we're going to work something out with the county. Um, I'm still talking to the county administrator about it. We're, we're going to shoot them a proposal as far as, you know, what all the issues are, take it to the county board. Hopefully, they'll be willing to, to work with us more. Um, you know, like I said before, our ultimate goal is to get rid of all these little lots and make it one big lot and let the county try to auction that off. Because if somebody buys this one big lot, they know they're going to have to come in and try to figure out some sort of development plan for it. But, I mean, worst case, we can discuss, if it comes down to the point where the county's really not that willing to work with us, is the city buying it first. We have the first option to, we can buy it for the, for the amount that it's for sale for, which is fine for the most part because we'll just get all the money back. The, the amount that's, they're charging per lot is basically the assessments that we're owed. So even if we, worst case scenario, had to buy it ourselves, we would be getting the money right back. It would just be a silly process of sending the money to the county, them processing and then sending us, it back to us. We're trying to avoid having to do anything like that because honestly, I don't want the land. I would rather see it put up for auction as one big parcel and let's hope that somebody buys it and then we'll get our money back. Well, if somebody that has a, a lot that they're going to develop, we can work with them on it. But we really won't know that until we, it goes to auction. Um, so our hope is, is that this is kind of just that first step in setting it up with the county that we will convince them before they take it to auction to do a, do a lot combination and make it into one big parcel. Um, but if for some reason they don't, uh, we will have the conversation as a council then with what do we want to do about this? We want to try to buy them back ourselves, at least then we control it. Um, but if it gets, worst case scenario where they auction it off as-is, we, the one thing we can control at least is the zoning. And so by modifying the zoning to this, at least, even if you get some guy in California thinks he's going to get a great deal for a lot for five thousand dollars in Minnesota and become a developer, even his most basic, um, research in, it's going to show that he's going to have to talk to us first. So hopefully, he will talk to us before he actually tries to buy the lot so he understands what he's getting. That's our hope with doing this, is that we don't want to walk away from it and ignore it because it's still something we have to deal with and this is one of the few things we can actually control with it. So we're trying to do it now as a part of getting the county to work with us hopefully more in the future.
Okay, so, uh, just a quick question, then. Normally, we go into a process like this, we take and, uh, the developer comes in, gives us his plans, he does the project, and, uh, after he's got sewer and water and streets and everything in, we approve it and then we annex it, the way I understand it. So now in this case, we have annexed it and it is ours. Uh, I know we didn't accept it, we never got approved to be accepted, so it, it definitely is city, city property out there, so how, how does somebody else own it now?
Well, it's not, we don't own the land itself. Well, what you're talking about is like accepting the utilities.
Right.
So, I mean, the utilities, well, although we've never accepted them, the mains underneath are operating and they work, so they're within our system. So we're maintaining them, we're keeping them because we're using them. Um, and the road itself, though, we never accepted the road, um, so we can't, um, by not accepting them, what we're saying is, is they don't meet city standards. So if somebody goes in and tries to do something with it, they have to fix everything in there to be bringing the city standards, then we accept them. That's when we go in and start plowing them, we maintain them, do all those sort of things. So, but the land itself, all the parcels up there, were owned by whoever and through So, but the land itself, all the parcels up there, were owned by whoever and through the rotations of bankruptcies, different banks. And now they're owned by the state of Minnesota because they went tax forfeit. So all those lots up there are owned by the state. So it's not that the city owns any of it. We've never owned any of it. All we're talking about is actually the, the infrastructure itself. And we have not accepted that. So if anybody comes in and does anything, they have to fix it to our standards before we accept it and actually start maintaining the roads, plowing, all that sort of stuff, putting it in our schedule for resurfacing, you know, those sort of things. So that all has to get fixed first. But all the lots themselves were privately owned until they went tax forfeit. Now they're owned by the state. And that's what we're trying to deal with, is make sure that we don't get people buying individual lots in the middle of this development, coming in later to find out they can't do a, a thing with them.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not the chair will take a motion to approve ordinance three twenty seven resoning the area identified by the accompanying map from an R three medium density residential district to a UR urban reserve district.
So moved.
I'll second.
A motion by Bill, second by Rod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Moves us on to item eight C, which is the iPad purchases.
Oh, the other one.
Or actually, eight, eight I, which is the Resolution two thousand and seven relating to local trail connections.
Yeah. The, the only thing I had a question for you on that, Aaron, was on the planning commission, two, three years ago, when we talked about this, there was some concern on the amount of money it would cost to go up that Lee Chevrolet hillside there and tie that Mill Street thing in. At that time, the planning commission voted to do an alternate and put stripes up the one side hill by the Lee Chevrolet parking lot and across by the Lee Chevrolet building to actually stripe that as a walkway from Mill Street down to the, so if there's any way we can come up with some grant money and get that loop around underneath that bridge and get the overflow parking tied in, but we can't get enough to do the, the hillside there and all that stuff to get the Mill Street, I think we should at least keep that option open. And the other thing is with that project from the overflow down there underneath the bridge, we don't, we don't have to go top notch on this. We don't have to go blacktop concrete. We've got other alternatives. We got boardwalks, we got fine gravel packed. And, and so much of that down there, I wouldn't want to put in concrete. The way the flooding is going, we're gonna put it in, it's gonna get flooded out, we're putting it back. So my thinking is, on that, whatever we can do to just get this going, when we get some grant money or something, we can update it later. But on the same phase with this, I can't figure out, why do they have, why does our staff have to ask us to go after grant money? Why can't they just do it?
Well, okay, so with some of, yeah, I mean, the bottom line is, is we're asking for what we see as the high end as far as the cost. Now, if the state comes back and says, well, we can only award you X, then we'll do just what you said. Well, our priority is getting that connection from the park and ride to the trailhead. So if we have to scale it back, that'll be our priority part. And then we'll worry about the Lee Chevrolet kind of part of it later. But then the other part would be, is if we get less money too, we can adjust what we're calling for. Like you said, is it packed, you know, packed gravel, something like that instead. So depending on what the grant money comes in at, because often the state will say, well, we can't give you that, but we can give you this. And then you make compromise and, and make that work. So we can definitely do that. And the only reason we have to do it is because we need a resolution to support. So that's why, you know, we need the council to say that, yeah, we support the project, apply for the grant, you know, and go ahead with it. So that's why we come back with, with those sort of things, is usually they need some sort of council. So the council knows what we're doing, basically.
I think the, the other thing is there, I got some feedback where some people didn't like the farmer's market being moved out. We are doing this because we're having expansion problems. The trail is growing more, the farmer's market is growing more, and we're, we always keep trying to squeeze more into that little box. So it wasn't an easy decision for the council to move that out of there. But the other thing is, my thinking is, this trail becomes even more important because if they want to go down to Econo Foods and, and get their bread and whatever they do, and then they want to walk down to the farmer's market and get their stuff and come back to that parking lot, I think that's where that underpass and all that becomes important there. It, it would also be nice if we could get Econo Foods or even the city of Cannon Falls or the state and the holy buckets, I hate to bring up the state, but it'd be nice to get a concrete crossing there right at the parking lot at Econo Foods because technically, they're supposed to go up by the post office and nobody does that. So I think all this stuff, how it ties together, makes the farmer's market better. So we need to, to push along that lines. And if you guys want to apply for grant money, I sure don't need to prove it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, chair will take a motion to approve Resolution two thousand and seven authorizing the preparation and submission of the application to the DNR requesting grant funding for the project.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Bill, second by Ron. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us on to item eight D now.
Okay, we're on the iPads?
We're on the iPads now, Leroy.
Okay. So I promise, this is the last time I'll bring this up. Last night, I was thinking about the iPads and, and since I'm not a techie person and I don't like computers, I thought, well, I'll call up a couple of people that really know them well and are computer experts. So I called them up and talked to them about this. I got their opinion. I, I told them what was going on. And I wrote down what they told me. And I'll just read it off to you, what they told me as being computer experts. One person told me he spends nine hours a day on a computer. So they all gave me their feedback on the iPad thing. I'd like to read this off to you and not really discuss it, but just tell you what they told me, okay? The, number one was, what do, what do iPads do that I can't already do with my laptop? Are we gonna have some kind of special group plan or extra internet stuff or something for these? They told me that iPads are more for personal use, entertainment, games and whatever, basically a little toy. They also, number four, they said, why do we need 20 units? Number five, ambulance and the fire department won't even work on them because they're on their own separate thing. Number six, most cities in, in corporate America are running on Windows. This is all stuff that hopefully you guys understand because I don't understand half it. Number seven is, what do iPads do that laptops won't? Two years, iPads are gonna be outdated anyway. Number eight, we had some issues here a couple of years ago where we did a lot of cutting and things and we couldn't get bonuses at that time. We couldn't do that, but we can afford to spend this kind of money on this. We can't, we can't, don't have the money for the trail ride and that stuff down there, but we got money to invest in this. They also said to me, this is where I'm really lost. Android and smartphones are three to 600 bucks. Brandalinton laptops are 300 bucks. They'll do a perfectly good job. One person said to me, this seems like a spiff for the city people, and he didn't think the taxpayers would like it. Number 12, this was my end of it. We hired a tech person a couple of years ago to make things better and to do a better job of what we got. But I didn't, I didn't feel we were hiring a tech person to spend more money on technology. And the other thing that I get concerned about and read about all the time is the security of computers is just getting worse and worse. So I wanted to bring this up. I'm just not against computers, but I just don't think it's the right thing. Thank you.
Well, Leroy, I will say, as far as the reason we're doing this, is, as far as the financial end of it, we'll actually save money because we won't be putting out the paper.
Both them told me we won't save a nickel. And my experience with computers with my, my plumbing, heating, and air conditioning is, we're going more computers all the time. I gotta go to more schools. They pay more for the equipment to go to computers and it takes more money to service from after they're in. So I, I don't, I don't see any savings going on or otherwise. I definitely vote for this.
I know a lot of counties and a lot of cities are starting to go paperless. I mean, they're going this route. I know I'm doing it in my county because the amount of paper, the amount we save just in paper alone will be astronomical in the long run on this. I mean, just like Aaron said, when we first brought this up, I mean, the amount of paper that's used will be cut drastically in half, if not more than that, because at the amount that, the amount of time and gas it takes to, for things to be delivered, I mean, will be cut down. So, I mean, in the long run, it's gonna save money all the way around. The federal government's going to it more and more in a lot of other instances. So, and as far as security goes, security's getting better and better on a lot of these things. So.
What about the 20 units? Why, why do we need 20 units, Aaron?
Well, we have the council and then department heads. And then we've actually, as we talked about with, when Mike was talking about how it's a process improvement thing with like billing or how we do our billing, permitting, things like that. So we'll actually need some other staff to be able to use them too. Sarah and Michelle will also probably need to be, to using as part of their job. So there's, there's a few in there. And then also, I know you talked about ambulance and fire a little bit, actually ambulance wants one for each, all three of their full time because of what they'll be using them for in the ambulance. They want each of them to have one. So it's, it's a combination of everyone. And, and we assume that's probably about, about the right number of, of how many we'll need. We won't order probably all of them to start with because not everybody will need them right away. But we'll slowly work them in as people do need them. But, you know, for the most part, I, I, I actually think that we'll see more use out of people that are more mobile, like our ambulance crew, some of our public works employees, and police as well. So we'll, we'll be adding more as it kind of goes along and we get this stuff updated and, and we get our system kind of up and running and how it's gonna work. But we assume 20 is, is a real good starting number. Like I said, we won't probably order that many right away. We won't need them. But as we slowly work, if Mike gets the system in place, we'll, we'll add them as we go. So we figured we'd ask for kind of all of them now and, and get the approval with it.
And you also got the main program. You're just expanding on that.
Right.
Like payment, the bill comes.
Yep.
You email it over.
Yep.
Or whatever, it gets okayed and way it goes.
Right. And that's one of the biggest things we've talked about is when we get things in now, they'll get scanned in at, at the front desk and then we'll never see that piece of paper again. It'll bounce to the certain, to the people through the program where everything will get approved electronically, they'll get processed electronically. And then if we can pay electronically, we pay electronically. And if we have to cut checks, then it'll print the checks on its own. But, yeah, I mean, and same with like a building permit. When that permit comes in, it gets scanned, it'll get bounced around for approval that way. It won't be, you know, copy for the county, copy for us, you know, those sort of things. So, yeah, it'll, it'll be a very different process on, on the way we do things.
Any further discussion? Not the chair will take a motion to approve the purchase of up to 20 iPads for a cost of $12,000.
So moved.
I'll second.
A motion by Bill, second by Rod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Eyes have it. Okay, that brings us to reports. You're the Lone Ranger tonight. Well, thanks. You did a good job on the open house. Chief?
And in staff tonight. Unfortunately, as you noted, Mr. Mayor, at the, the beginning of the council meeting, spring will be upon us, but the snow has not ended. We're continuing to do ticketing right up, I'm guessing probably till the end of the month, which is the end of our enforcement period by statute, or ordinance, excuse me. Just remind people that the snow falls, you do need to be cleaned up. Make sure you get your cars off the street so that it makes plowing, removal of, of the snow easier. On a different note, for the members of the council on the police commission, I'm looking at April 2nd for a police commission meeting, following our normal council business. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Uh, nothing.
Leroy?
I just wanted to say thank you to the council tonight. I think the PBC is really the right way to go. And it's been a long time since I've won any battles down here. And Myrtle, Myrlis isn't even here to help me tonight. So thank you for voting on that. I really feel it's the right way to go. Thank you.
Nothing.
On the cable and that, I think they're doing a real good job. He's spending more time or a little bit with our Cannon Falls history or museum. And he puts out the questions, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and different things. So, good thing to tune in.
I think that's a good thing, Morris. I can really see such an improvement on that stuff since Mike got here.
Yeah.
It used to be that you had to have your TV set on the max to hear the volume. And the next time you turned it on, you had to have it on low. And I think there's a lot of good things, improvements on there.
Yep.
And I'm, I'm sure there's a lot more things we can do, but, well, I think we're headed in the right direction there.
Yeah, he is doing a great job.
The only thing I got is I did get some letters on the, our letter here from a resident on the moving of the farmer's market. I've heard from, besides just this person, I've heard some others that are against it. And this person says they did a, their own canvassing of the, the businesses on Fourth Street. And a lot of them were, of the 15, 14, thought that it should stay where it is. And, and about half of those felt it was strongly. I'm guessing, if we should maybe take, have the chamber do a just check into it and see what they feel, or what most businesses feel about it. And maybe bring it back up at a later date about moving it.
Well, I, I have found myself personally running, running about 50/50. And I think Leroy talked about earlier, with these expansions and everything else going on, that's still a better, better route to go, I think, in the long term.
I guess I'd just like to see some numbers, Aaron, if we could get them to do that.
Yeah, I can ask the chamber if they'd be willing to send out an email to their kind of email list and even, you know, I don't know if we want to focus on downtown business owners only or however, but, and just see if there's, if they've got opinions one way or the other on, on the relocation of it. I can bring that back and, and let you know what we get. I can do that.
I mean, I'd just like to see some numbers and, you know, that way they're not so biased by one of us running out and, you know, feeling like there's pressure on them to say something while somebody's there. I think we ought to just give them the benefit of the doubt to do it on their own time. Okay.
You know, Robbie, a quick question for you. When I first came on the council, there was some big issues, kind of didn't know where to go, could go either way. The farmer's market thing down here, I know at Public Works, when we talked about this, when I was on there before, we also were talking about the, the volume of people and the safety and the crossings and everything. So we entered everything in there, not just moving it because it's, we wanted to let more bikers in there or something. But the other thing that I did bring up when I first came on the council like three years ago or something is that on, on issues like some of this stuff, I would just like to see a coupon in the paper that said, would you be for moving or keeping the farmer's market in where it is? And I checked in with a beacon at that time. It costs us like 30 bucks to do that and they could just put it in with their water bills. And we'd get a feedback on that. I did try mentioning that about three times and I never got any place. So I quit bringing it up. But this is something that I think we could have done something like that and got a feedback. And I think it'd be good for Public Works to get that feedback to help make their decisions. So if the Chamber of Commerce does it, I guess then same thing. But sometimes it'd be nice to have that feedback.
Yep. Okay. And that's all I've got. Anybody else got anything? Not? Take a motion to adjourn? Take a motion to adjourn?
So moved? Second.